We are going to start our regular meeting for the Syracuse City Council. Pledge of Allegiance, didn't get a flag, so we're gonna forego that. But we will do a moment of silence, not just for our city, but for our country and our county, for everyone that's been affected by this ugly, ugly virus. So if we can, a moment of silence. Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
This is the study session for that regular meeting, so we don't normally do a roll call.
I'm sorry, my head is so gone. Alrighty, I have item eight and I am withdrawing that. Nope, I have new business. I need a motion to introduce items five through thirteen onto the special meeting.
Counsel President, that will be one o'clock when we have the special meeting, because we're still on the May eleventh meeting now. We're not on the... But we start at the one o'clock meeting.
Special meeting. Okay. I have item eight and I will withdraw that one. Counselor Bay.
President, one second. I believe I have items, let me double check. One second. Alright, I have items through twelve. Number nine is the item that's been a topic of discussion for a while. Heather, if you would, I was wondering if you'd be able to maybe give an update?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I believe that I'll let Catherine Carnroy confirm and speak to this, but I believe that she has written the legislation in a manner that council has requested. And I'm if you've been able to review that yet, but it does signify and call out the main temple structure as the primary or most contributing component on the site.
Thank you. I did read it, and it appears to do what was requested. I'm gonna call Counsel Mike Green. You had concerns and I know you were taking an opportunity to read it. And you were gonna reach out to Temple Concord. Does it satisfy the concerns you had?
Yeah, so first of all, thank you, you know, Counsel Counsel Bay, as well as everyone that worked on it. I know it's been a lot of back and forth, but so yeah, I do appreciate the way it was written. I do, the one question I still have reached out to the temple about is it's still written in a way that this is the primary contributing portion? Is there a reason why we have to do it that way instead of making it the only? I mean, the concern is still that I think the way it's written, additions to the structure would still be contributing, just not the primary contributing. Is that right?
Heather, Catherine?
Yeah, I think I'll let the lawyer answer that question.
I'm not good with technology. This is Catherine Carnroy. Can you hear me? Okay, the reason we say primary is because we thought that that was the, that was the soundest word without going too far from what the Landmark Preservation Board is planning to do. Done. Because basically what, my understanding of what you want to do is that this is gonna protect the site and you want to make sure just that building, the Temple Concord Building, the Sanctuary Building, one that is the, one that's considered one certificate of appropriate site for. So the key is it's like a two-step process. You want the site protected, which is why you're, you're basically approving the protected site designation. You're modifying it so that there's on the record that you want this to be the primary contributing component, that that's what contributes. Like, so you, basically you're calling that part out. The rest of it is sort of, you're leaving it the way that they, the boards have set it, but the way that I read those resolutions, they're not, they have a historic significance in a sense, but it's not anything architectural that would need any development. Primary, you wanna go strong, but you don't wanna go too strong, because you don't wanna get it, you know, get into a debate as to, you know, what the, what the site is later on. But you're, you're basically defining the whole parcel regardless of that part. It's the parcel plan that's set nicely.
But is, I mean, so what restricts the council from saying the only contributing portion is the original sanctuary?
Well, we basically do that if you read further on, we, we, we use the legal part for the primary contributing component, because that's the zoning language. And I'll defer to Heather and our zoning attorney Catherine Ryan, but I did have both of them review it. So we wanna say that that's the primary contributing component, because that's the legal term. And then we do say later on in the draft that it's the most and the most significant. We, we don't wanna say only, because it's, you don't wanna get into a debate that there's something else. So that's more illegal determination, but I mean, obviously, I, I send it to you and Counsel Bay in response to your email. If you had, if you have a part where you wanna make an edit, let me know, we can review it. But as, as written, I'm very comfortable that it does what you want it to do. Because you wanna call out that to the Landmark Preservation Board.
Yes, I think let's, let's give us a little more time to digest that we talked to the temple and, you know, Counsel Bay and I can talk. I'm, I'm comfortable kind of giving a little more time to review it and then hopefully we'll be ready by Monday if that works.
Right, we have a better position than we were in last week.
I understand, I mean, it feels kind of par for the course maybe, but it seems like pretty clear that we're saying, make it so it's only the temple. And you're saying, well, we can't say that, because it's gonna create like a legal weirdo thing. That's what we actually wanna say.
You do say that it's just a legal, it's just a legal, we're, we're trying to stay within the parameters of normal zoning language. So we're, we're covering our bases from the legal perspective. It's just like when you reference statute, which the new version does. And we'll get you a copy of that, but we didn't play too much. There's gonna be fourteen edits, so we wanted to make sure we had a good, a good draft.
So do you have other examples that are similar, where you have one feature that's really contributing? And then you have a larger property that's about to be designated? But people have called out that the one, it's only, it's the one feature and the language is the same? Do you have, do you actually have that precedent that you're kind of making it sound like there is?
I'm gonna have to defer to Heather in zoning on that one, going backwards, but.
I can address that as well. This is Catherine Ryan. I would say the closest that the council has acted on in recent years would be Central Tech, where the, the modern building attached was not a primary factor. Heather can, can address that as well. And one thing I'll, I'll add, I think Catherine has made it clear as well, but we, we should stick to that primary language, because the language that we've drafted, we feel is fully supported by the record. So if there is a challenge to this, we, we wanna make sure that your decision is rational and supported by the record.
What was the building you said it cut out at that one point? I just didn't hear the name of the comparison.
The, the Central Tech designation. Yes, thank you.
I just didn't hear that, it cut out for that one. So, thank you. Okay.
If I could just chime in, so it seems that most of the council, I'm not speaking for everybody, but the one, some of the folks I've talked to on the council are basically comfortable with designating the sanctuary, or like going along with the sanctuary being the most important part as far as historic designation goes. I think the developer, the proposed developer and the congregation are comfortable with that.
That is correct.
This legislation seems to me to leave a lot of leverage for anybody who wants to challenge developer as he goes along his proposed development. It seems like there's way too much leeway in this language. I mean, if we, my, my opinion, if this language goes, goes ahead, I don't think this accomplishes what we want it to accomplish.
Right, I agree, Counsel Hogan. I think it needs to be more spot on, like if we're gonna designate the sanctuary, then that's what it needs to say, plain and simple. Like, we shouldn't leave room for any loopholes.
Yeah, because it designated the whole parcel, I agree.
I mean, many of us have taken a tour of the building and the only thing I think, I think the congregation wants to save the sanctuary, and I think the developer wants to save the sanctuary. I don't want any kind of boundary to be designated as far as the rest of the building goes. Catherine is, I mean, otherwise, I would just vote against the whole designation process. And what would, what would happen then? Who would challenge that? Would the Landmark Preservation Board sue the city? How, how's that work? Can anybody chime in on that?
Well, any, any party that is aggrieved would be able to file an article seventy-eight, and that could potentially include the the board, but also any, anybody who would support a designation. It's difficult to speculate.
They could do it with this legislation too, correct? I think we should, we, I, I think we should probably go ahead with what we actually want.
Counsel Hogan, this, Counsel Hogan, I'm sorry to interrupt you. This is Catherine Carnroy. The, what we, the legislation that's in your book was the, was the first attempt. Have you seen that? I, I only communicated with Counsel Green and Bay, as I told the council earlier, because I didn't wanna circulate fourteen versions and then people get confused as to what we're doing. We did edit it so that it is clearer. We put more language in there.
Well, Catherine, obviously, by not doing that, you confused me, so. So I will, I will see to both, I will see to Counsel Bay and Counsel Green on this. If there's another piece of legislation out there.
What we'll do, Counsel Hogan, and going forward, because Counsel Green's point is valid. We'll give it more consideration and ensure that the rest of the councils have a look at the most recent legislation to see if a determination could be made before or by Monday.
Okay, thanks, thank you, Counsel Bay, Counsel Green, Counsel Ray Allen, everybody.
Alright, I also have item number ten, eleven, Heather. Special permits.
Sorry, I muted myself. So item ten is a special permit for eleven hundred North Salina Street. This is a restaurant within a convenience store and this the only waiver for this item that the commission granted was for signage. And it was a non-substantial waiver. It was only nine square feet extra. So there's that one. I think it's on the corner of Lodi and North Salina.
I'm okay.
Counsel Hogan, or any, any concerns?
I believe that's in the second council district, on the board.
Any, any other questions about, that was item number ten, correct?
Yes.
Okay, item number eleven.
Alright, item eleven is also a special permit. This is for a care home at one twenty-five Green Street. And there were no waivers associated with this.
Questions from my colleagues?
I, I do have a question about that. It states in the document that they have no, that, okay, that they, they require an approval to operate as a care home. And there is not, they don't have any, anything saying that, that they have, that they have, that they are approved to do that. It, does that make, I mean, how, how does that work?
That's what you're voting on, to approve them.
Oh, okay, alright, I didn't, alright, thank you.
Any further questions on items ten, eleven? Thank you, Heather. Item number twelve is an item that passed committee. Eric Innes, if you would, in the event that any council have questions. This is for downtown revitalization initiatives. Take it away, Eric.
Sure, thank you, counselors. I, this has been a, a team effort with an NBD. I know Jen Tift is on the call as well. So, so I think the two of us might work off each other here, but this is a ten million dollar request and a grant application that will be submitted to the state of New York. Still working on exactly a timeline and when this will be due. But covering an, an area that is just to the south and to the west of downtown, involving several business corridors, including West on the Dogger Street, South Salina Street, South Avenue, really kind of boarding all the way to the south at Tolman. Really, the intent would be to use these funds for a number of purposes, commercial business investments, residential investment as well, infrastructure, public art, kind of quality of life as a whole. So really, there's a comprehensive way that you can improve this proposed target area. It's an exciting program. We've seen smaller communities take advantage of this, and they have been awarded, including locally, Oswego, Auburn, Cortlandt has had, and Fulltime have all received the funding. So we will be submitting an application this year. NBD is working closely with the community on this. We have a steering committee, as well as a working group of several community members, and we continue to just inform the community and we wanna continue to seek input on the application itself and then outreach and engagement, so that the larger community is aware of the fact that we are gonna be submitting this application. So just seeing a notification, I wanna make sure folks can hear me okay. But that, that is, so that is kind of the, the overall kind of summary of the proposal. And Jen, I don't know if there's anything else that you wanted to add that you may have left out.
No, well, any, any of my colleagues have any questions?
Yeah, I, I'd have a bunch. How detailed does, does the, does the application to be what's entailed and, you know, do you have to get down to the granular level on, on how the money would spend, be spent? And what kind of projects it would go to? And is that all still being developed, or, or do we have some, some broad stroke ideas?
So it is, it is being developed. One of the ways this program is shared is that you, you don't have to officially commit any specific dollar amounts or any specific sites. You can certainly talk about the narrative and talk about the overall area and where there's investment potential. However, after your awarded funds, there's kind of a year-long planning process. The state helps convene with the municipality to really identify through community feedback and engagement where these funds would best be deployed. So when you look at kind of this target area, I mean, there's a number of strategic sites that, that could use investment up and down West on the Dogger Street and in some of the other specific corridors. We see opportunity to include the infill housing that's going on at a residential level that the administration has been working with council on to do some new residential construction. And then we are looking at infrastructure as well, and we've been talking about improved lighting and some other things that we could do on, in this general target area. So Counsel, to your question, there, there's a number of potential sites that could receive investment, but this time, no, no funding amounts have to be committed or calculated in order to apply.
Eric, how far on South Ave is this going to be?
In terms of the boundary, so I'm just trying to remember where on South. I know Tolman, it really, Tolman is kind of the southernmost boundary that we have proposed as a part of that. And to my knowledge, that's about right around the area where it stops.
Tolman.
That's correct, yep.
It doesn't, it doesn't pass Tolman, it stops right there.
No, it does not pass Tolman. Any other questions from the joke or Driscoll?
I'm fine, Counsel Bay, thank you.
Thank you, that's it for me.
Okay, if there are no further questions, I will call that item ready. Those are my items.
Counsel Rod.
Madam President, I have items thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. They all relate to the thing repair and sealing asbestos removal. And City Hall, is there anybody who wants to just give a quick description for the group? It already passed committee, but for anybody who wasn't there? Maybe Frank, whoever.
It's Mary Vosler. Thirteen and fourteen are to amend those previous ordinances to add additional bond authorization and project costs to this incident. It's now up to a not-to-exceed amount of six hundred and five thousand dollars. The bulk of that is for asbestos abatement in the central payment office and in the mayor's suite area. The damage remediation was around forty-eight thousand, and the reconstruction of those two areas is, is estimated right now at around two hundred thousand dollars.
Just hypothetically, if there were, let's say it costs six hundred and five thousand, which we bond for, because we have to pay for it upfront, and then we get reimbursed for half a million. What happened? Do, we don't, we don't pay down those bonds, right? The bonds are out there, and then we just, like, money just comes in?
I don't think that scenario will happen. Travelers Insurance has already advanced us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And upon receipt of the invoices from the two vendors that were, that have the most costs here, they will audit those and they will submit for payment as soon as they're comfortable with the costs.
Okay, so what happens? How?
If we have to bond for it, in the end, any payments that come in would have to go into our debt service fund for repayment.
What was it that we authorized bonding for last time?
A hundred thousand, a hundred thousand, which is our deductible.
Right, why? Then given what you just described, as they gave us two hundred and fifty, why would we not need six hundred and five thousand authorization?
Because I have to pay the vendors first. So as an example, the
Didn't get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars? You do have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars now from the insurance, or you don't?
They sent us two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm going to have to pay the, I have to have authorization to pay the vendors. The vendors of the asbestos abatement of, of vendor is gonna be three hundred and ten thousand dollars. That bill will probably be presented to us on Monday.
I guess my question is, do we end up authorizing six hundred and five thousand dollars of bonds and then putting the money from the insurance company somehow into our cash?
If, if there's some sort of problem down the line where Travelers does not reimburse us for all these expenses, we have to have the bond ordinance in effect before the project ordinance is authorized by the council. You can't do this afterwards.
I know you can't, I know, that's why we always do it, but, so the, so we shouldn't end up using this bull, we shouldn't end up bonding six hundred and five thousand if it all works?
Correct.
Okay, how do we get an update on what actually happened after this? Like a year from now? Who will tell us, oh, in the end, we bonded for two hundred thousand dollars and we got reimbursed for five hundred thousand dollars, even though it only cost?
We would present a, a, a statement to the council on what total costs were and what total reimbursements were.
Okay, maybe I just flag other finance committee members to remind anybody who remembers, let's remember to ask about how much we bonded for this. And yeah, it can be like an experiment.
My money's on Mike.
Hey, Mary, I was in San Diego the other day. I noticed that they have everything blacked out, so they've already started the work, correct?
They have completed the asbestos abatement work in the central payment office area on the first floor. They are currently working now in the mayor's suite, and I'm told they are going to be finished by the weekend.
And this was, which, which company is doing the work?
Crawl, C-R-A-L, is doing the asbestos abatement work, and Trademark Restorations is the company that did the immediate damage remediation, and they're going to be doing the reconstruction.
Okay, and so since this was an emergency, like you guys didn't have to put it out to bid, you just hired?
We, we had done, since it was an emergency, all the estimated costs went to the mayor's office. The mayor signed off on it was an emergency. And it's, it's advertised in the paper as an emergency, and these vendors gave us estimates. And Travelers Insurance Company too, will be auditing all these bills. The city, whatever Travelers deems maybe unacceptable, the city's not gonna have to pick up. So we have a, you know, a third party looking at this.
Okay.
If I could ask one question, Mary, maybe this isn't to you, but somebody in the administration. At some point, will we get an evaluation of how this flood affected city services at any point now or in the future? I'm, I'm thinking about any kind of lost records or anything like that, maybe a evaluation or a report to the council leadership?
Okay.
Mary, anybody?
We can certainly gather that information. To my knowledge, we did not have any lost documents. There were documents that were water damaged, and those were sent out to be what they call freeze-dried, so we will be getting those back.
This is Frank Caliva, Counsel. There may be some equipment. I don't think the, the, all the electronic equipment has been fully evaluated yet. So there may be some electronic equipment, and I, we, we lost a copier, but most of that should be covered under the insurance claim as well. But we will certainly keep a total list, make a final statement to the council.
Thank you, Frank. Thanks, Mary.
This is Deputy Mayor. We're also seeing this as a opportunity to reimagine city space, city functions, as we're going forward. So looking at mishap as an opportunity to take another look at functioning.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, I don't have any more questions. I think they're ready.
Thank you. Counsel Green.
Madam President, I have items sixteen. Well, sixteen and seventeen, let's start with that. Commissioner, I know you were able to look at the list and you may be able to add some streets, and you wanna give us an update on where that stands?
Yep, we originally came up with a recon list that we looked into and we, and thought about revising. So right now, we are trying to minimize some of the curving on the list, so we can add more streets to pave. So that list is being worked on as we speak, and we should have that list in the next week or so.
I mean, obviously, we just wanna make sure that we're not delaying anything that causes the work to be delayed. You wanna just give us a little update on when the work's gonna start and how this would impact that?
Well, usually recon usually starts at the end of May anyway. We, it's a lot of preparation goes into recon. So right now, we're just filling in some of the potholes that are on some of the streets that we're doing. So we usually do some of the other carryovers that we'd had from last year, or some of the overlays that we're, we're gonna do in the beginning. And then we start our recon list. So it wouldn't start to the end of May anyway, and that's when we plan on starting, end of May, beginning of June. So nothing, no setbacks on our end.
Any questions on this from the council?
Just a comment of Counsel Green, I am definitely in favor of more paving and less curving. I just want to commend you on that strategic move there, Commissioner.
Thanks, Counselor, I appreciate it.
Any other questions on sixteen and seventeen for now? We'll move on to item eighteen, which is paired with nineteen as well, and twenty. This was discussed in committee, but you wanna just give us an update for the rest of the counselors on this item?
Hi, this is Mary Rabison. Eighteen through twenty is our Salina and State Street Mill and Ave project. The bids came in high, above our budget. We need approximately one point two eight two million. I have gone back to S M T C, and tomorrow they will be voting to give us federal funding for the project. So eighty percent federal funding of the one point two eight two additional needed. And DOT has also given us some Marchiselli money, one point two three seven million for the construction phase, which represents twelve point seven percent. And next year, they're gonna apply to give us the balance, to give us a full fifteen percent Marchiselli on the construction phase. So that's good news.
So Mary, I have a question for you. So why do they change the percentage on the Marchiselli?
I believe they gave us the I believe they gave us the because the original budget was 9.7 million. So they gave us approximately, I think, the 15% on the base, 9.7 million. So they'll give us the balance of this additional, the balance of 15% on this addition additional 1.2 million next year. They they go for the Marchiselli funding every February or so. So we should be getting that next year. They told us they were going to put that in the hopper for funding. So we're asking to amend the bond ordinance, the agreement with New York State DOT and the project authorization.
Any other questions on this? Item 21.
Item 21 is. Request to give permission to Renali to abandon. Section of the city's 12 inch sewer and 10 inch water main in the former Tracy Street right of way, the 500 block. They're going to be constructing a new warehouse. This section of sewer and water is not needed, so we are giving them permission to abandon. This section of sewer that's in conflict with their proposed warehouse.
Mary, this is a building that is this going to be right behind AMR?
Uh, I hope so.
Because I see I see the construction going on there, but you said it's going to be a warehouse. You know exactly what a warehouse for what?
I believe it's an auto part warehouse.
Okay.
It's been rent a year on Tracy Street and Erie Boulevard.
I can answer that if you want, Counselor.
Yes, please.
So that is, this is Heather Lamandola. That was before council. A while back, there was his own change to a plan development district, a district plan. And then the commission, after that had a project plan review for the actual warehouse. So it's adjacent to AMR, I believe, because it backs up to Richmond. So it is many different properties that were re-subdivided. As a result of Marcel's casket being demolished.
Okay. I was just curious because I ride past every day. Um, this is right down the street from my office, but I just wasn't sure exactly what was going in there, but I see him working.
It's a great project. It'll create a lot of jobs and with this going on right now, it's. Welcome. I met with the owners on it, so.
Okay, Matt Hogan, while you're, Council Hogan, while you're talking, you check the chat box because I'm sending you a message, but you're not responding to me.
Listen, I can't multitask like you young folks can.
Okay.
I'll also be coming back to you to we took it when they abandoned that section of Tracy Street. We retained an easement, so I will be coming back to you to abandon that easement. But we're still working with National Grid to make sure that they're okay with us abandoning the easement. So that might be on the next agenda. Just to give you a heads up. Item 22, if there's no more questions on 21. Item 22 is a revocable permission to Upstate Medical University. To construct, own and maintain a pedestrian bridge over Adams Street, the 700 block. This is to connect Upstate Health and Wellness Center, the proposed Upstate Health and Wellness Center to the main hospital. This is between Almond Street and Sarah Logan. We reviewed this. They meet the they exceed the minimum height requirements for clearance over Adams Street. And the permission has our standard terms and conditions for all our revocable permissions. The one thing we did change was it is revocable, but we if we do want to revoke it, we give them a year to remove the structure. Whereas normally we only allow like 30 days, but normally it's not such a big structure that they're installing.
Any questions on this? Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor Carney.
Thank you, Madam President. I have item 23 and Commissioner Lefave, if you'd like to just go over it again for us?
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you. This is an ordinance that we previously amended back in February. And now we are requesting another amendment to it. Basically through in 2019, we received grant funding from the Office of Child and Family Services. When I came in February, we requested the dollar amount that we were going to receive in funding to be increased because they had additional dollar amounts that that they could allocate to us. After that approval, they came back to us again and said that they had additional funding. So this is just for reimbursement, higher reimbursement. We're changing the dollar amount from $56,000 up to $70,000. This is for programming that has already taken place back in 2019. So it's just, I just want to accept more money.
Okay, does anyone have any questions on that?
Commissioner, when will we get a decision on like summer programs?
Not not this week at least. I mean, it's there's there's way too many variables to take into account.
I just ballpark.
I don't even know if I can give you a ballpark. I think it depends on the city. It depends on the state. It depends on the county. But. Yeah, I can't provide any solid update right now.
But I imagine your planning and if you're open to as far as any kind of like mitigation efforts.
I think that we're I think we're making the assumption that none of our camps will operate, none of our community, nothing will operate as scheduled. We're looking at if we will be able to host activities that we can maintain safely, such as yoga or other programs that where people can be close or farther apart. I mean, there's 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 honestly just way too many variables for us and, you know, we just a lot of our department were furloughed. So everything is day by day right now. I will certainly update all of you guys when we make big decisions, though, or when we're about to.
The golf courses open?
Golf courses are not open right now.
Okay, will they be?
So that's following in the footsteps of the county regulation, the county directive that public golf courses are not open. So that may be a decision that comes from beyond the city.
Okay.
Counselor Hogan, this is Sharon. The the other directive is this is from the governor's office because any reopening from the county which affects us, it has to be approved from the state. So we're kind of waiting for the 15th when we will get some more guidance from them about what the next phase will be.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner.
That was my only item, though.
Okay, if there aren't any other questions, I'm just going to call that ready.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Majoke.
I have item 24 to 28. I also have one waiver items from the from the fire department. I would like to call Chief, he's around. To talk about the waiver item, which is the fire prevention and safety grant program, which is the smoke carbon monoxide detector grant. Chief Ma.
Hello, hello, Counselor Majoke. Hello, everybody on the common council and everybody on the call. And so this waiver item is one of three grants that I'm applying for and seeking your approval. And the total of these three grants will be 1.1 million dollars that the city would receive if I was approved to get all these grants awarded. This particular grant that's on the waiver will support projects to enhance safety of the public and the firefighters from fire and fire related hazards. We would be able to receive $300,000. The primary goal of this grant is to reduce injury and prevent deaths among high risk populations in the city, which our city has pockets of neighborhoods, which this would definitely fall under. And our department will use these funds to install thousands of smoke and carbon monoxide detectors.
Any questions, counselors? All right, we did talk about it in the committee, so it's good. No questions, I would like to skip item 25 and and let's continue with Ma. We'll come back to item 25, so go to 26.
Okay, 26 is a grant. It's also through FEMA. It will allow the fire department to purchase personal protective equipment related to COVID response up to $100,000. This funding is to help provide personal protective equipment to firefighters and first responders who are managing emergencies during this COVID crisis.
Any question, counselors? All right, talk about talk about the safer item, Chief.
Number 25 is for the fire department to apply for the FEMA safer grant. This will be in the amount of $684,692. This was this safer grant program was created directly to provide funding to fire departments to help increase the number of frontline trained firefighters available in our communities. If this grant is awarded, we would use this grant to pay for four new firefighters for their salaries and benefits. It would be a three year program, 75% of all their salary and benefits would be paid. The first two years, the third year would be a 35%. This grant would pay for 35% of those firefighters.
Any questions? Chief Ma and Janet Burke, thank you for your hard work and. As you continue to find us some some ways to. Pay for our services. I think that's it for the fire. Want to go to the to the police? Chief Cecil, are you around?
I'm around, Counselor.
Okay, let's let's leave the item 24 at the last and let's start with item 27.
Okay, sure. Item 27 is a request to apply and receive a grant from the New York traffic safety committee. This one is $46,000. There's no local match. It's for seatbelt usage. It's for basically proactive work as regards to seatbelt uses, use reduced to reduce aggressive driving, speeding, distracted driving. And all the things that we deal with that cause serious injury or death. It is also used and has been used in the past for the work on Erie Boulevard with the drag racing.
All right, any questions? Let's move to an eight, Chief.
Item 28 is is another request to apply for a grant with the New York State Governor's Traffic Safety Committee. This one is for child passenger safety program. We've done this for many, many years. This this money supports both personnel costs and also the purchase of the seats themselves. And then we set up in a parking lot, a city parking lot and allow folks to come by. These officers that work it are trained and certified to show the proper way to put the child passenger seats in the vehicles. Oh, this, I'm sorry, this one's for $40,000 and again, there's no local match.
Any question, counselors?
Counselor, I just want to thank Chief Cecil. I know Chief Trudal, Chief Buckler always on this, but the new detail regarding ATVs, dirt bikes, all those other small motorcycles. It's really appreciated by the folks on the near west side and the southwest side. Thank you for your efforts in that direction.
Absolutely. You're welcome.
Counselor Majoke, I'd be curious to hear from from Chief Cecil. So exactly how would this would item 27 chief? Factor into the Erie Boulevard situation and the drag racing and all that?
Sure, so this grant allows us to put extra cars out there that are tied to the radio taking patrol calls, 911 calls. They're specifically out there to address specific things. In this case, it would be the drag racing. So they may set up in a location, they may use cameras to observe, they may pull vehicles over. But the whole idea is is those cars would be put out there, not tied to the radio, not getting pulled off, but specifically for that detail to address that that drag racing.
That'd be great. So would that come in the form of a special detail or would it be like an overtime situation where they'd just be put out there specifically for that?
Yes, it would mostly it would be a combination like, right, it would probably it would be overtime, but also some of it would be on straight time. But it would be, but to answer your question is whether it was straight time or overtime, the cars would be specific for that to address that particular issue. So we have much more, we're much more effective if we have specific cars for specific things, especially during the summer when they're when they could get called off at any moment for assault or shooting or something else.
Right, so.
Counselors, Counselor Driscoll, not to be short here, but within 15 minutes, we have our special meeting.
I'll talk to Chief.
Good agenda.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you. Thank you, Chief. So let's let's go back to item 24, Chief, and and just run through the logic of of the 12,000 quickly.
Sure, so it is Interfaith Works. The reason we settled on the $12,000 and we're asking for $12,000 is they completed four dialogues of what was scheduled to be 10. So four dialogues out of 10 is 40% of the work done, 40% of the $30,000 that was set aside for them is $12,000. So there it would be being paid for the actual work that was completed.
Any question, counselors? If not, Madam President, all of them ready. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Allen.
Thank you. I have item 29. Originally, it was communicated to the council office that there weren't any items. So we didn't have any. That was presented at the standing committee meeting. So this is new to me today, but I did, I read through what was sent over and I did chat with Counselor Hogan. So this is just, I thought I saw Yolanda on here. But this is just, is this adding existing parking spaces or additional parking spaces to existing parking lots?
Yes, hi, Counselor Allen. Yolanda Johnson, Construction Development Coordinator. I have item number 29. And it's just asking, the owner's asking for permission for the existing asphalt parking spaces.
Counselor Allen, I think maybe we can reserve any kind of comments maybe to the next study session on Monday on this. I made my comments clear to people and as far as they're all documented in the approval forms and everything. So I think we can, you know, have it ready for a vote, but I want to make a few comments. I don't want to take any time because we have at 1 o'clock, we have to vote, so.
Okay, so you want to wait until Monday for your comment?
Right.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor.
Thank you, Madam President. I have items 30 and 31. Item 30 is the generic environmental impact statement. For the lead study that we did, lead hazard identification in support of the ordinance. There's not been a tremendous amount of change from the original environmental draft to the now final.
Excuse me for a minute.
She just turned it on. I see it now.
Okay. I'm sorry, Counselor.
That's good. Good to keep laughing. So yeah, if any counselors have any questions, I can send you an overview review of the environmental impact study. But very similar to what we initially accepted in the draft, so I'd like to introduce that and encourage its adoption unless anybody has any questions. We have Brian Baer, I believe, on as well. Item 31 is a resolution requesting that we move wine and spirit bottles to be included in the return. Instead of going to the blue bin, this would save us a tremendous amount of money from our recycling efforts. So I would like to just introduce both of those and encourage their adoption. And if any of my fellow counselors have any questions, I'm sure there's myself and others on here who can answer any questions about either of those items. Any counselors, any questions? Okay, if no one has any questions, I guess we'll. Okay, if no one has any questions, I guess we'll we'll I'll pass that back to you, President, and we can move along.
Thank you. And with that, we have 10 minutes to spare for our special meeting, so I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. All righty, we'll stay right here and we'll get ready for our special meeting, counselors. Thank you.
Thank you.
It is a separate link, everyone, for the for the special meeting. Just so you know, you have to log off for this meeting. Yes.
Okay, thanks, James. Did you sit send it out? Yeah, that's nice. Okay.